Board meeting for Monday, June 17th, 2024 to order. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting. We are going to be going into executive session and we will not return before 6:00 P. M.
Pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with all non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, personnel by law employees.
Second.
Did you say?
Sommo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye again.
Hi. Five zero. Okay. Select Board meeting back to order. We were in executive session earlier on Item A where we took no action. And I'll just reiterate again, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the free public, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to hear a public comment.
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to everybody here. We will be having office hours with myself and potentially Select Board Member McCaskill Thursday, June 27th, 2024, from 7:30 a.m. to 8:45 a.m. at the SEAL Pub, 703 Main Street, Harwich. All are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we also have thank you for serving for 15 years to David Ryer on the Board of Appeals. And I, do we have Brian, Brian? I think Brian had a few words he was wanting to say.
Like, like the new digs.
I'm the Chair of the Harwich Board of Appeals. And thank you for setting a time in your agenda tonight to recognize David Ryer's service to the Board of Appeals and the Town of Harwich. I'd like to preference my remarks with a quote on the definition of community volunteerism. Volunteerism at its core embodies a spirit of selfishness and community service. It is a cornerstone of civil society driven by individuals who willingly contribute their time, skills, and resources to support their community and causes they believe in. Our town boards and committees consist of residents who contribute their time for the benefit of Harwich. These committees often work towards solving complex issues, making decisions, and recommending policies that helps to shape the kind of community in which we live. Harwich is fortunate to have many volunteers whose knowledge and skills are resources assisting town government. I'm here tonight to pay tribute to one such volunteer, David Ryer, who is leaving the Board of Appeals after 15 years as a member, serving at least six as his Chair. Two years ago, anticipating he was serving his last term on the Board of Appeals, David stepped down as Chair. I may have succeeded him, but I can assure you that it is challenging to replace the experience, knowledge, and leadership which Dave brought to the table. Last year, Dave wanted to retire from the Board, but at my request, stayed on one more year to further assist the members and myself as I gained additional experience as Chair. I'd like to request that the Select Board and the Town of Harwich recognize David's tenure on the Board of Appeals and his contribution to the community. With that in mind, I also want to acknowledge that given the number of town boards and committees, I expect there are many citizens who have volunteered for five, 10, 15 years and more, who are still members of committees and in active service to the Harwich community. If a program is not already in place to recognize outstanding service to Harwich, I recommend one should be considered, a program designed to promote civic engagement by encouraging individuals to participate actively in the democratic process and contribute to the common good. I feel there's an opportunity to do more to instill a sense of civic responsibility and encourage residents to actively shape their community. In the process of promoting civic engagement, please consider taking the opportunity to recognize individuals such as David Ryer and Brad Chase from the Conservation Commission, as well as those who have achieved significant milestones in community involvement, even though they may remain active in service to Town of Harwich. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And I think that all of this board congratulates Dave on, can't hear?
Yeah. We're working on that right now.
Sorry, what'd you say, Matt?
I'm working on that audio issue right now.
All right.
Your volume's a little low.
Okay.
If you pull it closer.
I'm trying, it's just not wanting to move.
It actually has some slack.
But the furniture looks great.
I don't have any slack. And I'm not breaking it because then I'll get a bill. I just wanted to say that we were lucky to have Dave as a member of the Board as well as Brad Chase on Conservation, which is our second item here in terms of congratulating Brad, who we've just recently lost from Conservation Commission. And it is a remarkable, long, lengthy volunteerism and dedication to the town, and I agree with you. I mean, we do send letters to thank people, but we do have people currently on boards and committees and doing great work, so it's hard to fill some of those spots, as we know from when Mary Anderson, former Select Board Member, asked us to read the listings that we had. So anybody out there in the public who's listening and is interested in serving their town, we need volunteers. So thank you, Brian. And then can we get a motion, well, a recognition for thanking Brad, as well as I've already mentioned, Brad Chase on the Conservation Commission for 15 years. And Michael, he just did a presentation with you on fisheries.
Yeah, he's going to be missed. He's a very important part of that committee. Luckily, we still have him on the state level, and I don't think Brad's going anywhere. He's just not going to be on the Conservation Commission. But he certainly added a lot to that committee.
He did. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we accompany that with a letter to each of them?
Of course, the letter too, but.
In the motion, I mean.
The letters are in your signature file.
Perfect.
So the motion would be to recognize him and sign the letters.
Right. I mean, this is under public comment and announcement anyway, but you know, we have the letters. I think we're good on that. You don't need any kind of formal vote, Joe, correct?
Correct.
So we can then go to presentations. Matt, do you want a minute before we go because our next?
Yeah, just one minute.
Yep.
Is there anyone else for public comment and announcement while we're waiting? I don't know if the public will hear you, though, so.
Thank you, Lynn Cooper, D. P. W. Director. I rise to inform the Board that last Wednesday, we had a 25% design public hearing for the Safe Roots to School grant that we have through the state. This was initiated in 2018 by the elementary school in conjunction and collaboration with the town. That 25% design hearing, I've been to a bunch of them. I believe we only had one resident that rose to have any remarks taken, was 30 minutes long. And there was more Mass DOT people there than there were Harwich residents. I don't necessarily look at that as a negative because we had an informational meeting about a year ago to try to contract. They were, the state was trying to turn this from a sidewalk project into a multimodal lane 10-foot pass. And I felt that that was going to be out of character, and the state needed to hear that, so they graciously held a meeting about a year ago, or maybe a little more than that. And this 25% design hearing went smooth sailing. I believe construction on this is slated for fall of 2027, if memory, and I did get a link from Channel 18 that is posted on the town's website as well.
What date did you say, fall of?
I think it's 2027.
Okay.
For construction. I think it's fall 2027.
Thank you.
More importantly, on another note, the sidewalk project, the Route 28 sidewalk project, that is on schedule to be advertised August 3rd. By advertise, I mean that go, the Mass DOT advertises that for contractors to bid on the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Donovan, East Harwich, a member of the Capitol Outlay Committee. First, a question. Will you allow us to ask questions when you get to your goals section?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll hold my comments for that. My reason for being here today is because I would ask the committee to consider maybe a more consistent and better way to get information from committees, all these committee members who participate, when a subject is before the committee. And I'm going to just use, and you all know where I'm going, my own example. I wanted to talk about the Capitol Outlay, the Capitol Plan before the town meeting at Select Board, and I was cautioned that I might be in violation of an open meeting rule. And yet, a week or two ago, in three different committees, committee members got up and spoke about subjects before their committee, not as citizens, but as committee members. And I feel like it's a four-legged stool here, where you have the opinions of the town administrator, the department head opinions, all of your opinions, but the committee isn't always heard before you vote. And I think we just need to figure out, and I think that's part of the frustration that committee members have, some committees do it better than others, I would say. Maybe I'm not doing it as well as I should be, but I think there just needs to be a process where it's fair, consistent, and all the work that the committees do gets heard before you make your decisions.
So on that note, and the goals and objectives discussion, that is obviously on there about better communication.
Okay.
Great. So it sort of parlay's right into what you're talking about.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Cara Mulaney, Director of Cultural Affairs. I first would like to point out and present to you our part-time program aide, Mary Pat Maloney. She is going to come in and help me at the 204 Assistant and rock a lot of these events and programs you're about to hear about. So first comes up is we have our classes and workshops starting this week. We have a bunch of stuff, and it goes in through August. We have a storytelling class starting this week, a watercolor workshop, Stigeology for Kids Summer Camp. Youth Hip-Hop starts back on July 2nd, followed by Adult Hip-Hop, and we are introducing African Dance with the Drummer Queens and 508 Dance Therapy on Wednesday, July 24th. And we'll be introducing a cheer fitness class, and that'll be scheduled to start in July as well. For special events at the 204, we have a poetry performance this week with Tongo Ice and Martin and Chris Hosea, which is on Thursday, June 20th, at 6:00 P. M. On June 29th and June 30th, we welcome Citizens for Global Solutions, who are holding a community conservation, conversations for the Cape and Islands chapter, which invites you, our all-community members, to partake in an event for America's place in the world, facilitated by former U.S. Ambassador-at-Large for War Crimes, David J. Scheffer. And then on Saturday, or excuse me, starting July 11th, in lieu of the Harwich Farmers' Market, we are going to be starting the 204 Market Series on Thursdays from 3:00 to 6:00 in July and August. We welcome farmers, makers, and artists. I think we are over 30 vendors at this moment, and we are including the Harwich Historical Society, so we're very excited to have the program continue. And currently for that, we are in process of approval for SNAP and WIC to see if we can accommodate those vouchers for the summer. So we hope to have that announced by July 11th, but we will make the announcement once we know if we have the USDA approval. And then on July 14th, we're hosting another thrift and flea market from 9:30 to 3:00 P. M. We just got word today that it's being picked up for a fashion show, but we also had word that Coca-Cola and Life Water are coming in to sponsor, and they'll be there present for the day, giving out swag to community members and anyone who shows up. So it'll be a very exciting event, and it's taking off way much bigger than I ever expected. Cranfest in the Courtyard starts on July 11th. On July 25th, we welcome back Maureen Hancock with Postcards from Heaven. And then on the Cultural District side, hence why I have a prop, which is our seal, and this is in collaboration with the Harwich Port Merchants. We have about eight artists from the 204, and additional artists in the community, about 20 SEALs are going to be going out around July 4th weekend. They'll be in the stores in Harwich Port with bid sheets. The Harwich Port Merchants are raising funds to give to the Children's Center right on Sisson Road down the street. On August 17th, we'll be holding an actual auction day with SEALs in the park at Don't Park. So we're very excited to be joining that with them. And then Harwich Center Cultural District is excited that our Summer Concert Series is kicking off on July 1st, right at Brooks Park, every single Monday night, so when there's not a board meeting, I expect to see people. It's from 6:00 to 7:30, and we have an insane lineup. One person that we did not announce formally before, but we can officially announce is Sarah Swain, and the O'Boys are going to be closing out the Summer Series concert. So it's every single Monday in July, every single Monday in August. And you can find out everything you need to know either harwichculture.com, 204ssisson.com, or visit us on Facebook. Everything is uploaded and ready to go. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. There's a lot to do.
Before we, no one else. Thank you, Madam Chair. And to piggyback on Martha's statement, I think now's a perfect time for me to mention that in the interest of our goals and objectives, which we'll talk about later, of information flow and transparency and the like, I think it would be, well, I'll just say this, I dropped the ball on Friday when I saw our agenda, which includes FOG. And I feel that I should have reached out to the committee that I'm the liaison for, which is bylaw charter review, and I probably should have notified them that this was going to be on the agenda. And my feeling is, is it's incumbent, and this might be my feeling, my feeling only, but I think it's incumbent upon the Board or administration or collection of the two to inform our committee members and our commissions and our boards, when something hits the agenda that we get access to a little sooner than everybody else. I think it would be really great if we could inform the committees, the boards, and the commissions of something that might be of interest to them on either a Friday or Saturday in hopes that they don't just miss it on a Sunday or a Monday when the agenda gets published. So that's just my feeling, and you know, I'd like to bring this up at a later time, maybe formalize a procedure so that our committees, commissions, and boards get information a little bit more quickly, and they're well-informed, so that they can attend if they have an interest in being here on a Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment and announcement? Okay. Can we move on to our presentation with our Form of Government member, who is Andrew Sheehan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining us on the big screen is Andrew Sheehan, co-chair of the Mass Municipal Managers Associations, or excuse me, the Mass Municipal Associations Form of Government Committee. And Mr. Sheehan is town manager, and Andy, I'm going off of memory here, Sudbury, if I'm correct?
That's correct, Joe.
And he has graciously agreed to review the Harwich Charter and to follow on the conversation that you folks had with another one of our colleagues on FOG, Charlie Castle, back in February. And Mr. Sheehan has also been made aware of the changes that were approved at town meeting for the charter that the Attorney General has just reviewed and will go before the voters next spring. So with that, Madam Chair, through you, I would turn it over to Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Sheehan.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can. Can you hear me all right?
All right. I can hear you just fine. Thank you. And thank you, Joe, for the intro. So again, Andy Sheehan, I'm the town manager. We're Sudbury, Massachusetts. I'm co-chair or vice-chair of the Mass Municipal Management Association's Form of Government Committee. And what the FOG committee does is make ourselves available to cities and towns, or to towns really, that are going through charter review or form of government reviews to provide any kind of information that we can provide to help communities going through those processes. These are processes that communities don't typically go through on a regular basis. You go through bylaw reviews on a fairly regular basis, whether general bylaw or zoning bylaw, but charter review and form of government review is a less common occurrence, and so there are things that we think we can help with that will help communities as you go through that process. So I did have a chance to look at the amendments that were adopted at the town meeting this year, as well as look at the charter in general. It's typically not our practice to recommend a particular direction, but really to provide some feedback or as a sounding board for either a government study committee or Select Board or whoever is in need of our expertise or our feedback. So happy to do that and have a conversation with you tonight. And if it continues beyond tonight, happy to do that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. In terms of the bylaw charter review items that we approved at town meeting, did you have any feedback to offer there and maybe what we should be looking at next?
Not a lot of feedback. Some of it was fairly ministerial in nature, changing select men to select board, things like that, a little clarity on the holding of the town meeting, the annual town meeting. One thing that did jump out at me a bit was the human resources position. And that is a, it is a shared position between the Select Board and the town administrator. And the thought or the concern that I had was it's very difficult when you have a position that has two masters. And so, you know, there's obviously a reason for that, and the reason may be perfectly legitimate. On the face of it, it's something that, as a professional manager, that I've seen can be problematic. And so that was the one that I think more than any other jumped out at me from the changes that were taken up this year.
Okay. Thank you. Do any board members have specific questions on, for Andrew? Anybody?
Well, he specifically mentioned the human resource position and potential difficulty serving two masters. What have you seen as the structure regarding that position?
Well, it varies from community to community, and really it comes down to what the goal of the charter, or the particular charter change is. And that overarching goal can vary from community to community. Some places it is efficiency, and you want to have as inefficient a form of government and governmental structure as possible in order to make the best use of the limited resources that most of us have. In other places, the primary goal is less about efficiency and is more about inclusion or dispersal of authority. And I'm not saying that one is more credible or more important or better than another. It's just a matter of what the goal is. And sometimes I also understand and recognize that we have changes or we have charter provisions or bylaw provisions that are specific to some issue that has arisen in the community over time. And so there's something that's put in place as a sort of check on the future or a check on the present and leaning towards or looking to the future. And again, that's just, these are all local decisions, local practices, and not necessarily are right or are wrong, it's whatever fits in the particular community. But typically, in terms of authority, you want to have, you want to have it clear and unambiguous who each position reports to. And so if a position is reporting to both the Select Board, my person Select Board, and the town administrator, you know, who's the final arbiter? Who's the tiebreaker on that? And is it clear that the H.R. Director, in this case, is taking direction from the full board, if it is the board, rather than a single member of the board or a minority of the board? So those are the kinds of things that I've seen that come up that can cause challenges.
Any follow-up, Pete?
No, that was good. Thank you.
I think in terms to just give you a little feedback there, I think the idea will be that, you know, as we talked about this at length, and then it was successful at town meeting, it would be that the Personnel Director would be working with, you know, the town administrator, and then only if they had a reason for some unusual reason to address the board, they had that ability to do so. So in the sense of having a more empowered position. I don't want to cut off any other board members. If you have a question, I just have a follow-up. So do you have any experience in your town in Sudbury of a standing bylaw charter review committee or any type of past experience with charter commission?
So in Sudbury, the charter went into effect about 30 years ago. There is not a standing committee or, I don't even believe that there is a frequency by which the charter is supposed to be reviewed or the bylaws are supposed to be reviewed. I was a town administrator in two other communities prior to coming to Sudbury. One of those towns did have a, I believe it was a 10-year time for charter reviews and five years for bylaw reviews. It doesn't always get followed. You know, we get busy, things come up, and things take longer than we expect, but I have seen it in other communities where there's a call for a regular review. And I think that's a good practice because I think sometimes charters can get adopted, and especially if you're going from a, if you're adopting your first charter, you would, it's sort of like a planning document in a way. And often, we criticize ourselves or our colleagues or our communities for having too many plans that sit on a shelf. And I think it's important to take the charter out and take a look at it and review it and make sure that it's functioning in the way that you want it to function. And again, that gets back to those goals. What is the goal? Is it efficiency? Is it dispersal of authority? Whatever it happens to be.
Thank you. Any, Michael?
Is there any documents available to show what other towns on Cape Cod and towns off Cape of like size use for a form of government?
There is a list on the Mass Municipal Association website of the types or the communities and their form of government. There's a list by number, however many number, however many communities are cities, however many have town administrator or town manager. There are still some that don't have a professional management component to it. It's really just the Select Board and their administrative staff. There's not a hard and fast rule, though, that over, you know, 10,000, you should be this, or over 20,000, you should be that. That does exist in other communities, I mean, in other states, and I've seen that. I think that's the case in New Jersey or Pennsylvania, where over a certain threshold, you cease to be a town and you're now a city, and you adopt a city form of government. But Massachusetts is less prescriptive, and that goes back to, really goes back to our colonial past and is sort of. colonial past and is sort of memorialized in the home rule amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution.
And to follow up on that, is there...
And then in terms of forms, you know, typically, when we're looking at, you know, what might be appropriate in our community, we look to see what comparable communities often in our area have for a form of government. And so we look at their charter, we look at their organizing documents.
You might have answered my question, but so is there a tool available through your organization if we wanted to discuss where we are, town administrator versus town manager? How do we start that guidance process? Is it just a conversation with the board or is there ground rules to this?
I wouldn't say that there are ground rules. I think this is a way to start that conversation. Again, I think you need to have a clear sense or the community needs to have a clear sense of what they want its governing structure to look like or to accomplish. You know, and it's now more difficult than it was, say, 20 years ago because there is a, there's been a failing, I suppose you could say, in social organizations, governmental organizations and authorities. And so there is less trust now in local government or government at all levels than there was certainly when I started in local government 30 years ago. And so in many respects, it can be harder to bring on a form of government that leads to more efficiencies because there's less trust of elected officials, of appointed officials, professional staff, all of that. So those are things you have to work through locally. And that is, you know, what I experienced in Sudbury is not the same as what my colleagues one or two towns away may be experiencing in their communities. So it's really an introspective view of what the community wants.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I have nothing.
Okay. I think that you've, Michael, good questions on some more resources that maybe we should be looking at. And then I guess the other question I would have is, having had a chance to look at the charter and knowing that the different revisions that were just made, do you have sort of a recommendation of next steps of other sections of the charter? Or really that's more for us to sort of get a guidance on ourselves to figure out where we should go next?
I think that's a lot of it. I think it's deciding amongst yourselves what you, what the end goal is. One thing that did jump out to me is the charter is extremely detailed and it's quite long. I think it's half again longer than the U.S. Constitution. And I always describe our charters as, you know, our local constitution. And so there's, you know, there's a lot of information in there. There's a lot of information that probably doesn't need to be there. And if you were starting from scratch, maybe you wouldn't put it in there. Then you have to decide, is it worth changing that? Is it worth, like, in the elected boards and committees? There's a list each of the committees, boards that are elected, and then what they all do and essentially says, shall operate under the statutes and bylaws pertaining to the library trustees or whatever it happens to be. It doesn't really need to be said, but that's not an unusual approach to it. And one community that I worked in did have almost exactly the same language. But the drawback is it gets a little bit harder sometimes to find what you're looking for when you've got that level of detail. And so, you know, I've seen everything from just a one-sentence section that says, the following boards and committees and officials shall be chosen by election. And it lists all of them. And then it says, everybody else is appointed by whoever, the select board or the town manager, whoever it happens to be. So there's, you know, again, there's no wrong and right way. There's 351 communities in Massachusetts and there's not 351 charters, but as many charters as they are, as there are, they are all a little bit different from each other. And to get back to the earlier question about resources, you know, we can, the form of government committee can help with that. We do have, we do try to keep a sort of library of bylaws and charters, charters particularly. And we're happy to share that if somebody's looking for a particular charter or a provision that deals with something that's a little bit unique, we may be able to help you with that. It's frankly very easy to search online and find what you're looking for. It's not as, AI is not to the point where you can say, show me a charter that has a strong town manager and seven-member select board or, you know, whatever it happens to be. So we don't have that capacity yet, but it's, you know, but there's information out there. If you say, you know, if you think that Brewster is a good example, for instance, easy enough to get their charter and look at it. And pick and choose. That's what I recommend. Pick what's right in the elected officials segment. Pick what's right for Harwich for the title and the duties of the town administrator or town manager. The other thing I'd say is, don't get hung up on the title. Often, the title of your chief operating officer or chief administrative officer becomes a real lightning rod and detracts or distracts from other things. If you want to have a strong chief administrative officer, but you don't want to call it a town manager, don't call it a town manager. You can have a strong town administrator. We've seen that and we could point you to examples of that because sometimes just the change in title gets people on edge and concerned about, you know, you're trying to sedify our community and turn it from a town into a city or something like that. And so you don't want to lose the battle on those grounds. So there are ways around that where you can say, hey, we're just going to go to a more streamlined authority, but we're not changing the title. Again, if that's the direction you want to go. And I'm not saying you should, but there are things that we can, maybe we can help you with.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it and we will reach out about the resources. I think they'd be helpful to us.
Yeah, happy to help out and Joe can reach out or the chair or whoever's leading the charge, feel free to reach out to me. Joe has my contact info. So happy to help out and the committee is always happy to talk further and help through whatever the process turns out to be.
Wonderful. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Okay, my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. The Route 124, Culvert.
Madam Chair, we're here this...
Don't you want to sit down at a luxurious...
You guys can go sit.
...space.
I'm going to talk for a minute and run out of capacity. Give you guys the floor. We're here this evening to give you an update on 124 Culvert project that's got a long history. I'm here this evening with Matthew Sylvia, a newly minted PE from Ty and Bond, and Eric O'Harian, a PE from Ty and Bond. Our former natural resource officer, Heinz Proft, and I applied for these very grants for a number of years to multiple agencies without getting traction. It became evident that you need to speak this language of grants and natural resources and that Heinz, a natural resource officer, and I, as a DPW director, were ill-equipped to do that. I happened to be at a meeting probably three years ago now, a trade organization, a DPW trade organization meeting, and Eric unfortunately sat next to me. And in that conversation, we started talking about culverts. I shared my frustration with MVP, which we'll be talking about this evening, and being constantly rejected over that. Eric said, this is our ballywig, this is what I do for a living. He whipped his phone out, showed me some culverts he's doing in Dennis and Yarmouth. And I said, all right, let's make an application. We did that application. The first year, we got rejected. We followed up with them, with MVP, and found out what we did wrong, how we could chop in our pencil, came back. The second year, we got traction. We are now here this evening as the last component of the first-year MVP grant required a public presentation, and we're going to do that. We also have two other grants for this culvert, one for NRCS that is funding a contract that I believe is on your agenda tonight for consideration, and a second MVP one that I think Eric will talk about a little bit to fund things that NRCS is not funding. So it is my sincere hope to be able to get this project at zero cost to the taxpayers of Harwich. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the Crackerjack team.
Great. Thank you, Link. Feel free to sit here if you prefer. It's up to you, both of you, wherever you'd like to go.
Thank you for the introduction, Link, and thank you for having us. We did prepare several slides that we let you go through that have content and graphics that, where pictures might speak a little bit better than words.
Right.
So as Link mentioned, I'm Eric O'Harian. I'm an engineer and project manager with Ty and Bond. I'm joined by Matt Sylvia.
Also civil engineers, Ty and Bond, and new PE. Thank you, Link.
So we want to give you an update on the work that's been conducted over the past year and what we expect upcoming. Let's see if these clicker... So the project has a lot of partners, including MVP, Cape Cod Conservation District, NRCS, there's a division of USDA, DCR, and the Town of Harwich, including the DPW, Department of Natural Resources, and the Conservation Commission. So to date, the town has received $89,913 in grant funding from MVP, and that studied an initial, that included an initial study to evaluate existing conditions and do site reconnaissance and perform conceptual design for a replacement culvert. Since that time, as Link mentioned, the town has secured $246,000 through NRCS to fund the next steps of preliminary and final design for the replacement. And lastly, there's a pending grant with MVP to fill in the gaps. And those gaps will include items that are ineligible with NRCS that are the obligation of the town. That includes permitting, right-of-way, and utility coordination. And on top of that, there will be additional public engagement, such as meetings like this. Lastly, I want to mention that NRCS intends on funding 75% of the construction costs. So to give a little overview of where the site is located, it can, so the culvert conveys the flow from Long Pond into Hinckley's Pond on Route 124, and it also goes underneath the Cape Cod rail trail. So there's three distinct components of this crossing. Starting at the east, at the outlet of Long Pond, there's an outlet structure. And then there's an open concrete channel. And then there's a culvert that goes underneath the rail trail and Route 124, and then the flow continues on to Hinckley's Pond. So here's photos of those key components. So you can see on the left, an RCP pipe, which is a two-and-a-half-foot diameter pipe. In the photo, you can see it's silted in with sand that has migrated from Long Pond into the culvert. And then there's also a photo in the middle of the concrete channel that's 63 feet long. And then where that channel meets Long Pond, there's a control structure. That involves maintenance and in this photo too, you can see it's, the outlet control structure is silted in. So some of the goals and objectives of this project, first and foremost, is to improve function of the culvert. So it does serve as a key passageway for fish when it functions. So you could see on the top, there's a photo of the most recent herring migration that we're able to successfully get up through the culvert. Unfortunately, every year, this is not the case where oftentimes this culvert can be a barrier to the fish, either migrating to the pond or migrating from the pond back to the ocean. So that's one of the project goals, is to enhance that fish migration as well as improving the safety of the public since we are conveying a roadway and the rail trail. We want to improve resilience for the community from a hydraulic perspective, and we want to be able to stand up to the effects of climate change. We want to comply with the Massachusetts River and Stream Crossing standards, and we want to reduce the burden of the operation and maintenance costs that the town currently So a condition assessment was done several years ago, which likely kicked off a lot of the work that Link was mentioning before trying to get grant money. So that started by identifying a sinkhole in the roadway, and that occurs at the interface where the existing culvert actually changes from a pipe under the roadway to a stone culvert below the rail trail. And right at that interface at the edge of the road, you can notice a sinkhole. And the DPW has been working to manage that sinkhole over the years. But you can see that there is fill material from above migrating down through the top of the culvert. So Matt's going to describe some of the work that's been conducted to date.
So as Link previously mentioned, we were successful in carrying MVP grant funding for the existing conditions analysis, some modeling, and eventual conceptual design that we'll show later on in the slides. So that first phase that we've recently completed, we were able to gather, survey the location, do geotechnical borings and evaluate the geotechnical condition. We were able to delineate the wetlands, do some hydraulic modeling, and create a conceptual culvert and channel design. So this is a figure of 100 radius circle around the center point of the concrete culvert. This is our approximate survey limits. In that survey scope, we gathered information around the properties, existing utility information, the overhead wires, property information regarding the driveway locations, and some various trees and other aspects. Here, the next task that we completed was in the fall, we completed three geotechnical borings, two located along Route 124, as you can see in the image on the left, TB1 and TB2, and the third being adjacent to the Route 124 Cape Cod rail trail. Coordination was completed with DCR to get that location and the phasing, as you can see, on the right, of being just adjacent to that rail trail and keeping the rail trail open. Eric will go into more in-depth on the coordination that we plan to do with DCR in the next phases. What we found was some shallow fill and some medium-to-dense grade native soil, and the borings were terminated at 25 to 40 feet below the ground surface. Moving along, we completed some wetland delineation. It's kind of tough to see on the figure on the left, but there is multiple flagging locations on the left of Route 124 and then on the right adjacent to Long Pond. Wetland flagging has delineated all the wetland resources and the edge of the stream, upstream as well as downstream. So those wetland flagging locations help a lot with the geomorphic assessment. So a geomorphic assessment takes multiple stream cross-sections, and then we were able to average those cross-sections out. So as you can see on the image on the right, that's like the natural channel pretty downstream of the Route 124 culvert that you see on the left. Averaging out those cross-sections, we yielded a 7.9-foot stream width, and that's important for the design as the mass stream crossing standards. And that's important for the design as the mass stream crossing standards. So the mass stream crossing standards essentially outlines a need for a one-point-two times that natural width. And that yields the culvert width of nine-point-five feet in the proposed design. That makes the transition into the culvert a natural sequence as the, as the stream goes from culvert to, to the existing condition. So once we were able to gather all the existing condition information, we transitioned to some modeling. Here you can see the hydraulic and hydraulic analysis. Mast dot the LRFD, mast dot guide. The design storm of, of reference is the fifty-year design storm. And in that design storm, we're looking for a minimum of two feet of freeboard. And for those that don't know what the freeboard reference is, it's the elevation of the water to the bottom of the, the inner culvert elevation. So and in the existing condition under that storm, we're looking at only a one-point-four feet of open space of that freeboard. And then in the proposed design, we would be sufficiently above the two-point-oh at two-point-one feet of freeboard. After completing all that existing condition and the modeling, we're able to start to look at the conceptual design. So taking account the, the average width, and we were able to upsize the culvert to a nine-point-five-foot span, four-sided box culvert, which will have a natural bottom. So that natural bottom will, will mimic the stream, the stream current existing conditions for the, for the stream material at the bottom. And then transitioning from that culvert, it'll be a concrete, or a open channel replacing the concrete channel that Eric previously shown. And that channel as well will have that nine-foot, nine-point-five-foot width as well. So through these improvements, it'll drastically improve the fish passage. And then also through this is a component for public engagement. So as Eric referenced, MVP grant funding supports the public engagement side. And we're looking to implement an informational kiosk that would be along the Cape Cod Rail Trail that folks could, you know, ride their bike or walk up to and learn about the herring and, and that component and the upgrades that have been completed. And through this whole process, we'll be also maintaining the roadway and rail trail elevations and replacing and kind of what's currently out there. So here's a, a quick rendering of the project limits and conceptual design. So as you can see, looking from right to left, Long Pond is on the right. The concrete channel would be replaced with an open channel nine-and-a-half feet wide with some embankments connecting to a headwall into the culvert and then eventually downstream into the Herring River. And as you can see also, there's the resurfacing of Route 124 and the Cape Cod Rail Trail as long as, as well as some improvements in between with the vegetation. So moving into some engineered concepts, and I realize it's pretty hard to see some of that stuff. But the main takeaways here are showing the span of the, the culvert from Route 124 underneath the Cape Cod Rail Trail and seeing some of the utilities that are present along Route 124. So there is a gas main, a water main, and some overhead wires that we've been in, in design considerations. So currently, we're showing those above the culvert for the gas on the left, and then the water, conceptually designed below the, the concrete culvert. And lastly, some open channel cross-section, engineered cross-sections. On the left there, you can see another image of the, the pretty narrow concrete channel that's adjacent to Long Pond. And that's shown in the cross-section with the dashed abrupt lines. With the proposed condition, we'd be matching that nine-and-a-half-foot-wide culvert width and making it a two-to-one slope natural channel with some stabilized embankments for an easily accessible stream. I'll hand it back to Eric for some next steps.
So the, the next phase for MVP, the grant application, was submitted in April. We're hoping to get good news later this summer on that. And then the previous work will be concluded pretty much after this presentation. And then, so the application for next year will include permitting, utility coordination, and the right-of-way review, and then continued stakeholder engagement. We're going to continue with DCR coordination. Here's just a screenshot from a recent Zoom meeting that we had with, with several of their members, just collaborating on the project to, to discuss the impacts to the rail trail. We've received letters of support from DCR in 2023 and an updated letter recently in April 2024. So we'll be looking at continued coordination on right-of-way and specifically the private property adjacent to the right-of-way. And looking at the kiosk design and the trail reconnections that are going to be needed. We did have one more slide. I think it skipped with the button. On NRCS, so at the recommendation of Cape Cod Conservation District, NRCS has provided funding. We're going to be looking to complete that contract next, which will include design. So thirty percent through a hundred percent design. That will also include additional water monitoring, expanding the hydraulic analysis, and paying particular, particular focus on the connection itself from the waterway to the end of Long Pond. So with that, we'll open this, back to you if you have any questions.
Great presentation. Any board members have any specific questions? Michael?
I have no questions. Great presentation, and this is an excellent project. Be nice to see it done. One question, I guess, to the town administrator. Who's cleaning the, who's cleaning that channel out now? You mentioned silt and the fish not being able to go through it. Is that natural resources with the DPW?
So generally speaking, yes. One of the last official conversations I had with Heinz Proft, he brought me over to that side of Long Pond. He showed me the structure, which is the nicest way to call it, I think, and talked about the labor that was put in by natural resources and any help from DPW. And that was really to make the case for the project.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both for being here. Link was absolutely right. Fantastic presentation. My only question is, is there, are there any homeowners along this path that have become, I guess, inconvenienced or part of the process that you're looking to accomplish?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's, that's going to be definitely coming into play next, now that we understand what those impacts theoretically would be with the conceptual design. So we're, working with DPW and DCR on coordinating with those abutters. But as of right now, there would be two abutters that would likely be impacted by this, specifically right, right adjacent to that stream.
How do you expect that to go?
We're, we're, we're all optimistic. I, I think we have a good plan in place where we're going to get ahead of the, ahead of things before, before the design is finalized. And that's part of the reason why it's been advocated to include public engagement as part of the design process. I guess anecdotally, there's a lot of poison ivy along that edge of the stream. So here's also an opportunity to, to, to dress that up a bit. So we're optimistic that the abutters might look at that favorably.
Excellent. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Don?
I have nothing to add, other than thank you for the hard work. This is great.
Pete?
Couple trivial things, if I could. Is the, is the telephone pole just being relocated? It's not a new pole?
That's going to be determined in, in the next phase. Unfortunately, we don't know exactly how the utility companies will want to handle that relocation. So it's, it's to be determined if that's going to be a temporary relocation or permanent.
Okay. Some more to come there. I always have a, a concern when we, when we build structures. I'm not opposed to the kiosk by any stretch, but it really goes to Lincoln and his crew that it's going to become a maintenance item. You know, I hate to be the pessimist in the crowd, but we, we all know what happens to the kiosk over time. So it will just have to be something that's on the radar to maintain and keep looking appropriate, so that those who do wish to visit it aren't greeted by inappropriate or disgusting materials. So I assume that's on your radar?
Yes, sir. That'll be on our radar. And I believe this was a requirement of the MVP grant, that we had to do something like that. So our hands are tied to having to do some public engagement at the site.
Yeah. No, and again, I think it's fabulous to have it. I just, I, I can foresee the maintenance that will be required in, in future, in the future.
I'm not sure if that'll be DCR's or the Town of Harwich's, quite frankly. To be determined.
To be determined. All right.
There's an opportunity for it to be a DCR's. That's going to be on their property, so.
Okay.
And we do have an agenda item preemptively for our next meeting with DCR, where DCR wants to be engaged as part of that kiosk design, because they recognize it would be, as part of their trail system.
All right. Excellent.
How, how old is that existing culvert? Can anyone even?
I, I don't know if there are records that exist for that.
Okay. It looks pretty old, so. And how deep is it?
Below the roadway surface?
Yeah.
It's about six to eight feet?
Yeah, it's, it's a thirty-inch culvert with roughly four feet of, of roadway material above it, so.
And does the freeboard, is that for the, the base of the culvert? How does the freeboard work?
Free, yeah, the freeboard is from the base of the top inside of the culvert to the top of the water. So that gives a range.
That's the.
As like a fifty-year storm, you'd have capacity to be larger.
Right.
And that's, that's the freeboard, so.
And the freeboard's beneficial where if you do have that fifty-year, you know, storm event, if there's any floating debris, you know, trees or kayaks even, who knows, that, that should have enough room to fit under the top of the structure without clogging it.
Right, okay. So that's really the point of it.
That's why that freeboard's desirable.
And do you have to do any kind of safety precautions along the rail trail near that culvert? You know, fencing or something like that? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
There's an existing fence right now, and we would, you know, replicate that slash extend it to the proposed design.
Great. Well, it's a wonderful project, and we're excited about it, and it's badly needed. And do you, Joe, do you need anything from us until we get to the other item? Okay.
Nope, nothing yet.
So thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Glad Link bumped into you.
Thank you for having us.
Take care. Bye-bye. Okay, consent agenda?
Are there any items anybody wishes to remove from the agenda?
Does anyone have anything? Nope.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Item A, accept the resignation of Brad Hayes from the Conservation Commission effective June 30, 2024. Approve the select board meeting minutes from May 28, June 3, and June 10, 2024. Accept the gift of interior painting services at the Fire Department Headquarters, donated by EAS Painting. And item D, accept gift supporting the Health Department program, The People's Fridge, in varying amounts and forms from the Family Table Collaborative, the Harwich Chamber of Commerce, and Shaw Supermarket.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
Just wanted to add some thank yous. Edson De Souza from EAS Painting, that's the proprietor, but that's a very generous gift.
Amazing, yeah.
And then there's a few on the request from the Health Board. Food for Kids, Shaw's in the amount of twenty-five-hundred dollars, and the Family Table Collaborative. But thank you. These are very generous gifts.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero, Joe. And new business?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
A move that we approve the conservation restrictions at 61 and 77 Belzneck Road as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Joe?
I apologize. I thought you might be working through your clerk this evening. There's a substitute motion.
Oh, sorry.
That Harwich Conservation Trust has asked.
I withdraw my motion.
It expands language that I think Tom and Mike Locke are looking for.
I'll draw my second.
Okay, so can?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept and approve the Belzneck Road Herring River Land Preservation and Conservation Restriction on the land at 61 and 77 Belzneck Road, Harwich. Assesses map eighteen, lots K2 and K6, granted by the Harwich Conservation Trust and the Town of Harwich, acting by and through the Conservation Commission, subject to approval by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, who may make minor revisions thereto and contingent upon Conservation Commission acceptance and approval of the conservation restriction.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next item?
Madam Chair, if I could, next item on your agenda. I'm stalling, so my, my friend and colleague, Mark Drainville, can join in. You get to pick your poison, whether you'd like to be. You may recall, Mark, is still with GHD. He's been doing great work with Jeff Gregg and his team on all matters of wastewater. And Mark and I, most recently, have been working through the Great Sand Lakes Project, which we'll have more information on in a moment, and, and the contract and going forward. So specifically tonight, what I, I, administration is seeking, in concert with GHD, is for the board to vote to allow us to apply for the project construction funding through the state revolving fund process. So with that, I'd turn it over to Mark Drainville to correct anything I just said.
The only thing I'll add is that there's only one time each year that you can apply for the funding, and that deadline is at the end of July this year. So just recommend that, you know, this is a, recommend you, you do that, take advantage of that this year, so.
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add to that, that, that also is a trigger point for the county funding, because it relies on the filing being properly done to the state in order to back up the requests to the Clean Water Fund.
So that's correct. So it puts you in line, not only to get, to, for the SRF program, you'll get the twenty-five percent Cape and Islands Trust principal forgiveness, the disadvantaged communities, I think you get three percent for that, and then zero percent financing. So that, you know, that's everything altogether, so.
Good point, Don. Any other discussion on, on this topic? Can I get a motion for the, can we get a vote? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I've moved that we vote to seek state revolving funds, SRF, for the construction of the Great Sand Lakes Area Sewer Collection System, and to further authorize the, the town administrator to execute related documents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I am happy tonight to present the updated and conforming treasure chest charge. I'd like to make note that I did speak with Lincoln Hooper prior to putting this before the board for a vote or a discussion and possible vote. And it's here as presented, and I didn't receive any feedback from any of the board members. It's, you've, the board's had it, I think, for almost a month, maybe a little bit more. So I'm hopeful that this can move forward, and, and we'll check one more off the list.
Great. Thank you. Any, Don?
Well, I did talk to you about this charge. The only thing that I would recommend, and this was part of our conversation, I appreciate your change and some of the other stuff, is when it gets to the, the chair of the committee bringing recommendations to the treasure, of the Treasure Chest Committee, I would love it if it said, "We'll bring devoted recommendations," because there have been problems in the past where it kind of disconnect between what the chair of that committee was doing and whether or not the committee, committee itself had actually voted a position on it. Outside of that, it looks good.
Any other questions, comments? Michael?
I would move, I would move that we approve as presented with the one edit.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero.
So Madam Chair, if I may, would you like me to rewrite that with the language and then resubmit to admin?
Yeah, and then you can just give it a revised version, the one change.
Sure.
Yeah, but you don't have to bring it back.
Okay. No, I'll just send it to admin.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks, Don.
Sure. Thank you.
The next under, approve the fiscal year 2025 human service grant recipients, I guess.
Madam Chair, I have to recuse myself, because at least two of these pertain to boards that I am on. So I'll be back.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2025 human service grant recipients as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four-zero.
Get your steps in.
Item E, Pete, I- Item E, Pete, I keep, I keep taking over, sorry.
That's alright, I am more than willing to allow that to happen. Item E, approve a 2024 annual junk dealers license renewal for Arvem LLC DBA Howich Antique Center, ten Route 28.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Madam Chair, who is the second on that one?
Me.
Item F, approve a special permit application for the Howich Chamber of Commerce, one Schoolhouse Road, road race on, road race on Saturday, June 22, 2024, seven thirty A to ten, to one P.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. And, uh, next item? Old business.
Discussion on Queen Anne Road Traffic Safety?
Right.
Traffic Study?
So we're keeping this as an ongoing discussion. We have the information that, uh, Joe shared from the commission, so I'll look to board members who have any specific items they want to bring up on this topic. If, if there is any, you don't have to have any, but I'm just trying to keep it as an ongoing discussion. Michael?
Yeah, I just, I would like to get a timeline on when we're gonna do an actual traffic study. So I know that there's information in there, I was able to follow the links. Some of those roads are relative roads, others are not. We have not looked at the, I'd like to specifically understand the Love Lane and I'd like to specifically understand, um, where the project is for Queen Anne, uh, Queen Anne Road, the Queen Anne Road intersection, uh, Queen Anne and Main Street. And I would specifically like to understand more about Exit Ten as it relates to getting on and off the highway. And I do appreciate the amount of data that the, um, that they say they have, that they're gonna update. But I really don't want to be the board member that sits here and waits to get actual data until the projects start. And I do understand that there's been some conversation about the Love Lane, uh, project, so I will keep my comments just related to traffic. But the, the, the thought that, um, there's nothing to see here seems to be what I keep getting. And I'd like to understand what that means and who's coming up with the assessment that there's not gonna be an increase in traffic going from ninety to a hundred and ten seniors to seventy-three families. As far as the rest of the project goes, for future and, and sooner rather than later, I would like to get the legal opinion that was done, um, in writing to the board for the public. And I'd also like to understand what HAC has actually presented for that project and how the educational component is making it so that they might not have to do site plan review. So I'd like to understand what the site, what the educational component actually is, because the information in the packet really doesn't say anything. And, and, and what impacts this project could have to the town. But if the county's not gonna do a DRI, the county should put in writing why they're not gonna do a DRI and we should get in writing from our legal counsel that they've vetted what appears to be the Dover Amendment that may or may not apply. And then what's gonna happen in five years when this project changes again? And there's not an educational component and we have missed the opportunity to look at what this actually means to the town of Howich. I do understand that it's not in the town of Howich, but us talking about it and legal opinions being given and the commission giving opinions and us not having any of it in written form to give to the people and the public, um, to me is irresponsible. So I would like to get to that point sooner rather than later because we're gonna talk about this until the project is actually underway, if we don't have that. And we are being asked by the public, I know I have been, what's going on, when are we gonna get the information, when are we gonna get the traffic studies? And when they're gonna start, you know? The lights, um, Julie, I believe, Madam Chair, the information collected on some of these traffic studies are, are permanent things installed in traffic lights. That, to me, is not giving a true picture of what's happening past the dump because a lot of those cars coming off one twenty-four stop at the dump, turn around and go back. We're not getting anything for the Main Street, Queen Anne Road, and then the Queen Anne Road, the other Queen Anne, Love Lane intersection.
And then?
So I'd like to know when we're gonna start that process. And I mentioned it the last time we talked about this, we have our own counters, but they're not deployed yet. When are we gonna just ask the police department and traffic to put those out?
So I, I'm just gonna follow up on that question to Joe, because I thought I heard that we did not have our own counters. Is that, I'm not sure if I'm?
I, I had heard that from Public Works, I'll check with the police department.
Okay. And really, just to follow up on some of the items you addressed, we have, um, we were looking to have the Cape Cod Commission here tonight, but they weren't available, so, Joe, you're talking to them about when they can come?
I've been talking with, uh, Steve Tupper, the deputy director of the commission. The purposes, I've been speaking with him, he's also oversees the transportation department for the Cape Cod Commission. Additionally, I've been working with, uh, Steve Rhodes from VHB. So I've talked to each of them, I haven't had the opportunity to bring them together, but there are no plans yet by the commission for them to come before you on, uh, a topic related to anything to do with North Howich, South Dennis, and Love Lane.
Okay, so if we want to have that discussion in terms of what we could get from the commission to work with us on all of these different concerns we have, what do you think, uh, any timeframe on trying to set that up, or if there, are they willing to have that conversation?
The commission?
Yeah.
Not, not as what they told me
Okay.
three weeks ago.
And the other thing is, Michael, just to follow up on, um, your items, when your legal opinion from the board, uh, for the board from, um, HAC, correct? On the educational component?
I would like, yeah, I'd like to understand what their proposal actually and how their, what the educational component is, but I would also like to get from our legal counsel their opinion on what appears to be them using the Dover Amendment so that they don't have to do the DRI.
Yeah.
But if, if it is, if it is the case, it should be put in writing so that the public can get it. And we would have the opportunity to appeal or, or, and if our counsel can't do it, I know they're sitting in the room tonight, not why they're here, but if our counsel can't do it because they represent the other town, then I would, I would move for this board to hire outside counsel to look at it for us. But I just think time is of the essence on this, time is flying and we're gonna be on everyone's summer schedule. And, and, and as far as I know, Mark Harris, our traffic safety officer, has done traffic studies in the, in the, uh, past on that road with our own traffic counters.
On Queen Anne and Old Main?
Right. Well, not necessarily Old Man, but Old Main, but Queen. I would also take this opportunity to ask the town administrator, to ask the police chief or incoming police chief to set some radar, radar up on that road down towards the power lines on the weekend, there were several complaints this weekend about cars coming around the corner and nearly killing them when they come out of their driveways.
At that four-way intersection?
Uh, not the four-way intersection where the power lines cross Queen Anne Road with the proposed, uh, development or the almost proposed development's gonna go in.
Prior to Old Main, John, Joe?
You know, if I could fur, if I could further the, um, if I could further the, uh, request of the commission, whatever they have or whatever the town of Dennis has for proposals, the sooner this board can put their eyes on it, the better.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we have anything, um, specifically from Dennis beyond the traffic study. Uh, I don't know that Dennis has got.
I can regenerate the memo I done, I believe, last month that has, um, I can grab the link as anyone else can. What I found is what they, what the town of Dennis has on, I think, their planning department's page, that's the only known repository that I'm aware of.
That's, that's what I meant, was there's no additional.
I don't feel comfortable presenting that as that's what the town of Dennis has. It's what's publicly available.
Right.
Is that specific, sorry, Madam Chair, is that specific to the traffic study or the project?
That's the project.
The project, okay.
Yeah, and it gets into detail on the Dover Amendment. Anything else on traffic?
Wasn't, didn't Deputy Considine provide us with the traffic study we're talking about? And was that conducted through HAC? They ordered that study?
I believe, I, I'd have to go back and look at who ordered it, but the traffic study was shared as a result of that project.
Right, and, and something tells me it was, it was through HAC and so I'm wondering i, if we should invite a representative from HAC or, or the firm that they used to come before us and give us an explanation as to how they got to their conclusion. You know, I think it's a significant reduction in vehicle traffic that I, I'm not an expert, but I just, I struggle wrapping my arms around those numbers.
Reduction or increase?
They, they have a reduction.
Oh, theirs, yeah, no, I thought you were saying.
Yeah, it's significant reduction and I just don't see it. So I'd love to have, you know, either a member of HAC or, or the, or the firm that they use come in and, and, you know, I, I get that it's a Dennis property, but we know where it's, how it's accessed.
Yeah, I'm not sure, we can certainly try, I, you know, just don't know if they'll come.
Sure, they could tell us no, but we can, we can extend the
Yeah, we can.
olive leaf, you know?
Right.
Branch.
Anything else?
I, I would just like to say I support Select Board Member McCaskill's position. I think if we're not getting any information from Cape Cod Commission, we're not getting any, and there's no more information to get from the town of Dennis, it's incumbent upon our town to go and get the information we're looking for. So timeline for me is, 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 is very important. I'd like to, I'd like to see where, how this is all gonna lay out over the next couple of weeks or months.
Okay, well, we'll see what, what info we can get. I mean, I don't think we can get much from Dennis beyond the planning board information.
And I think we need to get, do our own information gathering.
And then I think, uh, we can see if, if we can get, uh, the, either HAC or the traffic study company, but I'm not sure they'll come, but we can certainly try.
My name's Dan Baker, um, I've been following this on both sides, both in Dennis and Howich, and, um, there might be a piece of information that might help you right now. I was speaking with the building commissioner in Dennis and they put in a discretionary referral last week to the Cape Cod Commission, which, uh, I don't know much about that, but it sounds like it's, they wanted to revisit the DRI, so.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys know that?
So we do and we actually have a letter supporting their request for reconsideration.
Okay, so you sent the letter?
We're getting ready, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we're aware of that and we would certainly support it and welcome any opportunity to have any seat at the table, but
Okay.
the likelihood of them granting the reconsideration is, is not huge.
Right, and, and is that because of the Dover Amendment they're using to bypass that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Okay, move along to, uh, cell tower revenue and Mr. Giorgio.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I had been asked, um, a few months ago now to, to look at this question of how the town was handling, um, the revenue from the Sprint cell tower lease, which was, my understanding was it was going into, um, it was going towards the Affordable Housing Trust. And, um, I was asked to research, um, how that came to be and how the laws have changed since that orig, that was originally set up. And, um, I trust you all have a copy of my memo, correct?
Yep.
And so, essentially, this started in two thousand and four and at that time, there was, um, the town created a, um, a, um, a housing trust fund for affordable housing. Now, at that time, there was no statutory Affordable Housing Trust. That didn't come into effect until about six or eight months after your town meeting vote. And, and, um, at the time, a, um, the general rule of municipal finance was that all revenue received from the town from any source goes into the general fund. And, um, at the closeout of the fiscal year, any, any remaining revenue that has been unspent, so that would have included the cell tower revenue, gets certified as free cash. And only when it's certified as free cash can you actually appropriate the funds. So in two thousand and sixteen, under the Municipal Modernization Act, the legislature added a provision, uh, to chapter forty, section five B that, um, allows a town to, obtain a town meeting vote to dedicate all or a portion of a recurring revenue to a specific stabilization fund. And that's the premise that we are operating under at this point. So, um, looking at this, I came to the conclusion that if it is the goal of the select board to dedicate that revenue, as you have been, to affordable housing, you basically have three options. You can go, go to town meeting, adopt the statute, which is chapter forty, section five B, the fourth paragraph, and if that is approved at town meeting, then, uh, you, um, the cell tower revenue would be automatically dedicated to your Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund, which you've already created.
Right.
So that's one option that's available to you. The second option that's available would be to seek special legislation and I don't necessarily recommend that because, um, you know, there are so many home rule petitions going up to the legislature, it takes forever and a lot of them die on the vine, I, I'm sorry to say, especially when the legislature has provided another mechanism through, in this case, the adoption of that, fourth paragraph of five B. The other option that you have is to just deposit that revenue into the general fund as provided for in, in, uh, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three. And when it is certified as, as free cash, you can go to town meeting and you can appropriate that for the benefit of the Affordable Housing Trust or any other housing project that you, that you would, you know, decide you wanted to support and town meeting would support. So those are basically your three options. The, 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 you know, an Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund has some benefits, it has some drawbacks. It segregates the money into a specific fund and it can only be spent if it's appropriated at a later date by town meeting. Now, the good news is, very recently, that statute was amended and appropriations from a special purpose stabilization fund now only require a majority vote for appropriation. So, you know, I, I think, in my view, probably the cleanest thing to do here would be to just go back to town meeting, adopt that statute. That money, as soon as you receive it, will go into this, the, um, of special purpose affor, um, Affordable Housing, Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. It's parked there, it can't be used for anything else other than affordable housing, but you would need to appropriate that at a subsequent town meeting.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me start by saying that I appreciate the fact that you can only operate on the basis of the facts that you are aware of when you're given this. I'm, I'm extremely disappointed on a direct report. Our, uh, town finance director, going straight to you without actually understanding the history of this also. There've been at least four, uh, finance directors, dozens of selectmen, and numerous projects over nineteen years that have had money dispersed from, uh, what we thought we had as a special purpose fund. As a matter of fact, Copelman and Page, the forerunner for KP Law, which linearly you're, you're from, was involved in setting this article up and in creating the follow-on mechanism that would, uh, that allowed the select board, by vote of the, uh, town meeting, they conveyed authority to the select board to do the dispersing under the guise that it would only be for affordable housing purposes. It is screwed up of a whole bunch of things, including the fact that we were trying to monetize, uh, the Marsline property with a percentage of, of funding that came from the cell tower, which doesn't have the same restrictions as a CPC, uh, not CPC, but as, as the housing trust does. Because the cap is different, uh, which would have allowed the, the property to be broken up because it wasn't a property anyway, where there was, there was a number of parcels, would have allowed different things to occur in different places and that was the understanding of that several people on this board of And that was the understanding, that several people on this board have actually voted to disperse funds through the years for that. And it was extremely disconcerting that our finance director came in and just said, "There is no money." It evaporated, it went to free cash. Here's that hasn't, that was not the way it was operating for years and years and years.
Right. No, I understand that, Don. And, you know, I have, I've worked with your finance director now in two different communities, and she is very meticulous, and that's a good thing overall, because it keeps all of us honest. A good finance director keeps us all very honest. And Kathleen raised this issue with me. You know, I actually went back and looked, where was I on May 3, 2004?
And there was a follow-on action in 2005 that clarified.
Well, I was in, I was at the Sandwich Town Meeting, you know? But, and it's 20 years ago, so it's very difficult to reconstruct what happened, what was thought of. All I can tell you is I have reduced in my memo, my opinion about how to fix this problem. Now, all the monies that you've dispersed pursuant to what everyone thought was the way this was going, that's not in jeopardy, that's not going to be undone. That was all done under color of law. This is really something that needs to be fixed prospectively.
You'll excuse me, but that's not entirely true. There's 100 and something thousands of dollars that have evaporated, that we thought had accrued into that fund, because we were going to vote to disperse it to the Housing Trust. And I might add, there was no nexus between those two, so I wouldn't argue that it should go directly to the Housing Trust either. The Board of Selectmen has the authority, in various instances, to be able to sponsor in part projects that the Select Board wants to, but maybe the Housing Trust doesn't. So we had the discretion at each year to either vote, put that money in to the Housing Trust coffers or not. It's unclear to me, and I have not been able to get an answer out of our finance director, about where the last two years of money have gone then. It seems like they may very well have just evaporated into free cash without any action whatsoever.
Well, that's what I would assume, too. I wouldn't call it evaporate, but it devolved.
Well, it is evaporated to the extent that we spent down the free cash in those given years.
For different, yeah.
So it isn't available anymore.
It most likely devolved to free cash.
Right. So now going forward is what we need to do. We need to figure out that what's the best avenue to go down to fix this going forward?
Madam Chair, in all deference, we need to be able to recover, and if not, if it isn't in an existing fund, the 100 and something thousand dollars that we thought was already there for the housing, we have to go back before you can go forward. That was not encumbered. It was, we voted last, two years ago, to put money into the Housing Trust Fund, but there was supposedly buildup occurring. That's not occurred. After I read your memo, you're saying that technically that didn't occur, and at the end of the fiscal year, we spent that money as free cash.
What is your free cash balance at this point?
I don't, we don't know it right now.
I mean, if you, you could rectify it if you have available certified free cash. Technically, that'll go away on June 30th, but it will be recertified in your fall number, and so you could go back to town meeting, and whatever you thought was going in, you could have a separate vote to appropriate that amount from free cash for affordable housing, either for, into the, to the benefit of the Affordable Housing Trust. You know, lots of towns, and I believe you, don't you vote a grant every year to the Affordable Housing Trust, in essence?
We do.
We do, but we reserve the right to make that vote. My point is, I would like a mechanism to make that fund that doesn't exist anymore whole before we start moving forward.
Well, what you, the way you would do that is at your next town meeting, you appropriate that amount from certified free cash. You can put it into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you can just give it as a grant to the, to the, to the trust, to the Affordable Housing Trust, or the Select Board could use it for your own affordable housing purposes. You do that, and you also adopt the statute. You've been made whole, and going forward, you'll do it right.
Right. So would you just do that? If we were going to do it that way, we could just do an article and bring it back?
Definitely.
I mean, that addresses your concern. It also lets us move forward in it with a cleaner process.
I just wanted to put everybody on notice that we're going to be about $160,000 lighter in free cash if we do what is necessary to recognize that that money was not carried forward.
Yep. Well, there was not that process in place that everybody thought there was. I mean, I've heard about that process for a while. I can't say I ever recalled that process, because I was not paying attention in 2004 or '05 or '06, I'll admit, so.
Well.
I don't think.
Mr. McCaskill voted to disperse funds from that during his tenure. I have, I think Mr. Pakarski has in his tenure. It came directly to the Select Board, it preceded the Housing Trust.
Oh, I'm not saying it didn't. I'm just saying clearly John has done the research to see if there's something in existence that somehow.
Yeah, I tried.
Right. So, I mean, now it's a case of, to your point that you've just made about the monies that you, you know, are saying, and then ultimately, how do we go forward? So we want to fix it, and we can make it whole, and we can look at those numbers, but I think cleaning it up in an article makes sense, so. Anybody have questions, Michael?
Thank you for being here. Adopting your, the first option, the fourth paragraph, Section 5B.
Yes.
You go on to say that we'd have to go back to town meeting for an appropriation on the money. If I'm reading what we did with the trust correctly, if we dedicated this money to go to the Affordable Housing Trust in its entirety, the way the trust is set up, we don't have to go back to town meeting to spend that.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So you could, that's the second option. Michael, you could simply wait until you get your free cash certified. That cell tower revenue going forward will be in that free cash number. You then, you could either appropriate it to that stabilization fund, but that requires a further action of town meeting, or you could just appropriate it as a grant to the Affordable Housing Trust. The trust can then expend that money. There's no town meeting involvement. You know, when you make that grant to the Affordable Housing Trust, you can place conditions on that.
But either way, we would have to wait until the free cash is certified to get that money.
Yes.
But we could create the mechanism where it automatically goes into the trust.
No. That would take special legislation.
That would take.
So the only thing you can do to dedicate that money for, I'm going to say, for affordable housing purposes, is to put it into an Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund. That's the mechanism in that Section 5B, but it has to go into a stabilization fund. The good news is it can be appropriated later by a majority vote now. If you want to just grant it to the trust and be done with town meeting action, then you would either need special legislation, which was my second option, or you need to wait till it's certified as free cash, and then town meeting can provide it as a grant to the trust, and they can expend that. You know, we can put language in that vote that says it's spent with the approval of the Select Board, if that's what you want to do. You could do that. I have a town that does that, as a matter of fact, so you have options.
So, I mean, I would support first and foremost getting the number that we didn't appropriate and creating an article that the first thing that comes out of free cash this year goes back into that article.
Replenishes, right.
And we replenish that.
Mm-hmm.
Which this is great conversation, because we talked a couple of weeks ago about creating warrant articles as we go.
That's right.
So John now has homework.
This is one we could do, right.
Did you what? I'm sorry, Michael?
You now have homework, because we're going to create the articles rather than waiting until the month before town meeting, we're going to create them all now.
Oh, okay.
As we come up with them.
Sure.
At least that's what we discussed. And then, Madam Chair, through you to Select Board Member Howell, Don, what mechanism, we've talked about this at length, what option do you want to see? But I, for one, would like to leave this room, or at least have a follow-up conversation sooner rather than later, so we could create the second article, so we never have to think about this again.
Do you, Madam Chair? That would be somewhat appealing in general, but I mean, there are, there aren't going to be times where there's something that we do, that's a smaller project, that we want to be able to retain the ability to fund. Doing it year by year, presumably with the mechanism that John is recommending, even though it gives us an extra layer of responsibility, at least gives us some sort of funding. I mean, the last project that was expended, that was supported by this was Habitat's build in West Harwich. That didn't go through the Housing Trust. Eventually, if there's nothing else on the horizon, we have been routinely just making the motion that there's $78,432 and vote to, you know, shift it over to the Housing Trust, but that was at our discretion.
So in the change of a finance director, how do we ensure that this never happens again? Is it a matter of a policy? That that, that this money has to go?
Apparently, it's a matter of legislation and/or town meeting vote.
It could be a policy, too. You could establish, the Select Board could establish a fiscal policy here about.
Right. And just automatic, right.
Yeah. Now, the other thing I wanted to, I wanted to mention was that, and I know this is off topic, but, but a lot of towns are doing, a lot of them, are taking a portion of the short-term rental, not the short-term rental, the rooms tax, and dedicating that to.
Yeah, we do that already.
We do do that, yeah.
Yeah. And that, it has to be a minimum, by the way, under that 5B, of 25% of the revenue, of that specific revenue. But that is certainly an option to look at in terms of funding. And then lastly, I listened with great interest to Andy Sheehan, and I know Andy very well. I've worked with him in a number of communities. And I would humbly suggest that if you want to schedule an agenda session at some point, I or Lauren or both of us would be more than happy to come and make a presentation. We can answer those questions, Michael, that you had about what happens on Cape Cod. And I totally agree with Andy that, you know, a rose by any other name would smell as sweet. Typically, if you have a town manager, that's the strongest chief administrative officer, but there's no magic in the name. We can also talk to you about different forms of the legislative branch, whether it's a, you know, representative town meeting, open town meeting, a town, I mean, Nantucket right now has a committee studying whether to go to a town council form of government, and I'm not pushing that, but we could certainly present to you any number of options. And the one thing to keep in mind, the beauty of a charter is that if you put something in your charter related to the distribution of powers and duties of various town boards and committees and officers, that provision is deemed consistent with the general laws, which means you can vary from the general laws. Without a charter, the library trustees, and I'm not picking on them, appoint the library director. Well, by charter, you can change that, and that's deemed consistent with the general laws. That's the, one of the most important tools that you have when you're looking at charter amendments, is how, what works best for Harwich in terms of how you distribute powers and duties.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we meandered into that discussion to, I didn't say anything at the time, but I thoroughly agreed with Andy's presentation. The equation really is as simple as what the town is looking to do. I mean, the efficiency thing could also be looked upon as less democratic to some people. I'm not sure if there is an appetite in the community, at least for myself, to actually get, grant more authority to both the Select Board and to a town administrator or town manager, whatever you want to call it, because that's the trade-off you're talking about, is making it less accessible to the citizens.
Yeah. But you can, you can add, you know, transparency provisions as well.
I'm not talking about transparency, I'm talking about stakeholding and actually participation in it, as opposed to you can watch it on TV and it's transparent.
Okay. All right.
All right. Well, thank you, John.
You're very welcome. Okay. I'm going to excuse myself.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Take care. And now our discussion on goals and objectives. And so I handed out to you as well as emailed, so in case you'd prefer to look at it on your screen. But I gave you the original list so that you had everything, and then I took direction from last meeting to combine certain elements based on your feedback at the meeting, and Jeff and Michael, you had given me your feedback and ratings. So it's, I know it's small print, but everybody's numbers in terms of priorities are noted in red in the column, the far left column, so I thought we could at least look at this and talk about honing in on where you see the most red and trying to figure out sort of a top 10 as we discussed. I know, Don, you said you had trouble with your computer, so we can certainly bring it back as well.
Yeah, and I didn't get the email until Saturday afternoon, so.
Yeah, I just, well.
I would appreciate more time to look at it.
Yeah, so, but for now, it can start as a discussion point.
Sure.
And I guess the best thing I could say before you focus in on the red is to look at the other items to see if you agree with, you know, the fact that they're not listed in anyone's priority, just so we can either figure out if they fit in another area, or if we would just push them down lower on the, on the priority list. So I think one thing I'll just point out, Pete, you had said last week, and I think you're right, in terms of number one, I think is a priority for Pete, Jeff, Michael, and myself, and I do believe that's more of a Select Board priority, because that's really up to us to drive that conversation with Chatham on future funding and at least begin that process. But there's all four in there. And then really, it kind of jumps from there. I think you can look at number three and see that Jeff, Michael, and Julie are interested in that. Jeff, I think it's your fourth. Michael, it's your third. It's my eighth, but we're all interested in it. And then just go down that way, and so you'll just see when it says that, that, you know, for example, the next one. Sorry, go into number two. The number two item, the Rec Department Review in Sisson Road. Jeff, that's your number two. Michael, it was your number two, so there's a common denominator there, and so on. So I don't know if any board member wants to start the discussion, or if you all feel you want more time, but I think the sooner we can drill down and get sort of a top 10 priority list. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, I kind of conflated Select Board and TA Goals and Objectives together because, I mean, you got.
We all did.
Yeah, you got them on one sheet here. Like, for instance, the idea of a town administrator proactively providing policy options for emerging issues was not a goal and objective for the board, it was a goal and objective for the TA.
Right. But so originally, we talked about coming up with these priorities, and then we can, and then we can decipher, because Pete broke them down into TA and Select Board, so I haven't started a separate list yet.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to be explicit, that I, in my mind, they were.
There are two different sets, but I think we need to hone in first on what the top 10 are, that we are focusing on the town administrator, and that's why I pointed out that number one doesn't fall to Joe, yet we're all interested, and it's a high priority. So that should go to the Select Board list.
That's us, yeah.
Right. So I think the further we hone in on these and discuss them and parse them out and figure out what part. Some of these may have both of us, which is why you see on this, the far right side, the TA and Select Board, some places, and sometimes it's TA Finance Director, you know? So I don't know if anyone wants to have a discussion now, or you want more time?
Yeah, and thank you for doing this. This is definitely helpful and clearly a lot of work. If the goal tonight is to maybe streamline this, or like bring it down to the bottom of the funnel, then I would suggest that number one, because it has four of the board members, I would then say, and I would just kind of go down in that fashion. I think number three has three of the board members, number eight has three of the board members, and I would look at those, those first three that I had mentioned, one, three, and eight, should, should fall under our goals and objectives.
Right. Right.
And, and just, just by sheer numbers.
And, and the only thing I would say about number one is that that's one I think we could pull to put on our Select Board goals and objectives, right, versus the town administrator.
Sure. And I would also, I would suggest to Don, and I hear exactly what you're saying, Don, what num, what number was that one that you referenced being more of a...
Twenty-one.
Yeah. So as much as I see that being something the town administrator will execute, it is a board goal. It's, it's what the board is looking for from the town administrator. Would that be a fair statement?
Kind of. What I had in mind with that is that it shouldn't be us asking. It should be town administrator identifying and saying, this is coming down the pike. It's coming down for a lot of communities. Here what's your option, here are your options that you might be able to take.
Agree 100%.
I haven't seen that occur.
No. And, and I agree that that is, is in interest of the board. I'm not speaking for the whole board. I'm speaking for, I guess, you at this moment. But if it becomes a, a vote of this board to put on as our goals and objectives, sure, it falls on the town administrator to execute, but I still think it's something that...
But, but you're right.
That we want.
In that sense, we, we have to make that clear, right?
That's right. It's us to make it clear. So I don't, I never looked at this as Select Board's goals and objectives, TA's goals and objectives. I looked at it as, what does the Select Board want to see happen in the short term to improve on many aspects of, of how our town is operating and run?
That's interesting. I never really actually looked at it from that perspective.
Yeah. It's, it all, but, but back to my point, does it, does it make sense, Madam Chair, to, to look at one, three, and eight? And get a consensus of the board on that?
Yeah.
And then that would be our first three?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe not in the top-three order, but the first three that we can put down on a separate sheet of paper.
Yeah, that we could at least list separately, right?
Sure.
Yeah. I think, I think that makes sense.
Do we need to vote that, Joe? Or is, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, is that a vote, or is that just a discussion consensus?
I need a vote.
These are your goals and objectives, so I would defer back to you on how you want to accomplish them.
Sure. Okay.
And the only other thing I would just point out on four, where we talked at length about improving the annual town meeting timeline and the schedule for the Select Board, FinCom, Capital Outlay. And then look at the charter-specified dates and try to back it in so that we have more, more time and, like to Michael's point earlier about an article we could start working on now, you know? So that item, and again, not everybody's had a chance to review everything, and then that's combined, I think, with another item. I have all my notes here about how I moved them. That's why I wanted you to also have the original. But I combined, I think it was 21 and 23. Let's see, 24 and 12. What's that one? This one is... Yeah. So in any case, some of them are consolidated because they are similar. And a lot of the financial ones, I think we can even further hone in on, because we've got some looking for certain types of reporting. I think the other has other items for the Finance Director in, provide semi-annual updates on town's overall debt, current, future, and recommend from TA on moving ahead. And then in the same one under that, this is on the originals, oh, no, this is on the current, sorry. Provide Select Board with timely updates on all approved capital projects and include progress and associated costs compared, and schedule and project closeout report. And so we also talked about beginning budget process with department heads at an earlier time, and include current level of service and contractual. So all of those things, I think we would agree, are important, and we want to talk about those. But I would say that that's one of our priorities that we did talk about at length.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Martha Donovan, East Harwich Capital Outlay Committee. I just, as a taxpayer, wanted to make a request, and you can take it for what it's worth. I think it would be nice for you all to have some concrete financial goals, whether it be around taxes, capital, debt, expenses, the school. My concern about the school is that if you get some kind of a savings, if you look at their budget, their budgets over the last three years, the increase has doubled. They have, they had a 6% increase last year. So, you know, are you treading water, is what I'm asking, you know? So I don't think you can attack the school situation unless you also attack the budget situation. Otherwise, you're kind of losing, you're, you're making a great effort, and then you're losing ground on the other side. I also think from the school perspective, there has to be a little bit of process when it comes to capital, because I felt like they jammed through a last-minute capital request, and we left three capital items on the floor that didn't get funded. And we, we just took on at $1.9 million in debt. Chatham took on $600,000. And to me, and I know that the Montemoy one isn't going to be sort of a numbers one that you can put out in public, because it's going to be a negotiation, and you're all going to sit around and figure out what you want to ask for. And as someone said to me, ask for what you want and then shut up, because the best way to negotiate. But I, it, it seems to me that just doing it based on number of kids in the school isn't working. And there are a lot of things that are fixed, like the building has to be there, whether there's one kid in the school or 500, you know? And yet, we're paying 75%. And they're issuing our debt on our full faith and credit at 75%, and we don't have a say in it. And that is very frustrating as a taxpayer. I would also say, and I did some numbers, and you know how I am about the numbers, if you're, if you had a goal about capital, I think one of the things you need to consider is, and I think, you know, I almost fell off my seat when the, when the Finance Director said she thought free cash was going to be somewhere between $3 and $4 million a year going forward. And we've always used free cash to cover our capital cost. Over the next four years, we have about $50 million in capital expenses, and we have $5 million on the table that we haven't financed for this year. And if you get 16, let's say you get $4 million a year, you get 16 million in over the next four years, that leaves you with almost $40 million of, of capital. And how are we going to finance that? So I would like to see some planning go on, you know? You don't have to share it, but it just is going to make your decision-making easier going forward, and especially around debt, because we're just not going to be able to keep issuing debt at this rate, keep our, our nice credit rating and, and our low interest rates. So I, I just would love to see some financial numbers and some concrete numbers around, you know, we're going to find new sources. This is a dream, right? New sources for capital. I don't think there are any, but, you know, or we're going to look at what it means to really issue that kind of, that level of debt. I think, I think having some financial goals around that would be helpful.
Well, and I'll just, just to note on the spreadsheet, which isn't in the packet, but 16 on our spreadsheet is, is provide semi-annual updates on town's overall debt and current and future recommendation from TA on moving ahead. So would we hear you?
And, and I appreciate, Joe came prepared, because he knew I was going to ask a question on debt at the town meeting. So I appreciate that Joe had those numbers. And that was helpful, and I think it was important for every taxpayer to listen to that. It's important.
It is. And, you know, I mean, we also have our wastewater project that's ongoing, but there, there are different numbers there, too, that will continue to change.
Right. I mean, we've approved $50 million. Hopefully, we're not going to...
Right. Exactly.
You spend $50 million, but it's still going to be a big number.
Right. No, exactly. Certainly, no one would deny that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a hard fixed.
Right. Right. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this, or...
The only thing I'll say, I go back to categorizing it as either a TA or a Select Board assignment, is if, if we're going to use this document in any way, shape, or form to evaluate the town administrator, then it needs to be clearly delineative of what his responsibilities are and what the board's responsibilities are. So having them intertwined only creates confusion. And again, as I stated a few weeks ago, I clearly understand that some will begin with the board and then transition to administration. But again, if, if it's going to be used as an evaluation tool, it needs to be clear and clean.
Agreed. Any other comments?
Hi, Elizabeth Harder. Quick question. For those at home and those of us in the audience, where do we get this information you're throwing around? We like 23 and number four, but not seven.
So, so the reason it's not in the packet, Elizabeth, is that I finally finished it today, because I was working on it over the weekend.
Okay.
So I'm happy to put it in the packet for next week, just so it's there.
Please, because it makes it, otherwise, we all sit here like you're speaking...
Understood. And that's why I mentioned that, you know, that I emailed it to others as well as printed it, so...
Public should have it if you...
In any case, the public will have it. It's just was the initial discussion. And if I had some sort of admin support, then maybe I would have gone to you sooner. So...
Why did you look at Michael when you said that?
So if there's no other discussion, then I would just ask that we bring it back again so that we can finally finalize that and, and stop breaking it down, to your point of this is us, this is the TA, or this is both of us, but this is what we see for the TA. And it's only fair to Joe that we are clear. And if he's going to be evaluated on it, he should understand exactly what we want.
We should be able to accomplish that with some actions and deliverables in there.
Right.
I think that, that's the, the only way we're going to, because most of these are going to be joint, so without the actions and deliverables. So Julie, I will go through the list and send you the same notes I sent before, based on your new...
Yeah, like broken.
I'll break it down and send you what I have.
Great. And then we can do that. Once we hone in on those, then we can break them down into the actions and deliverables, so then we can finally be done with this process. Okay?
And I would just comment that I do think it's, I think it's healthy, transparent to have these conversations and recognize that we have full-time jobs putting it in the packet a week later, or having a few copies for those that, that may attend. But I'm sure the, the majority of the public wouldn't want us to wait until it was a final draft to have any conversation about it. So I found this, this helpful, and I know several people in public have commented that they appreciate we add the stuff after the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So contracts, Joe? Do you need, do you, sorry. Do you want us to just make a motion, or do you have anything you want to say about it?
I don't think he's going to make the motion.
No, not him. I'm just saying, I could go right to a motion.
There's somebody on my immediate left that would like to know that it's been executed.
Perfect. Okay.
And, and I'd stand by the memo in the packet.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on item A under section nine, contracts?
Move to award a contract with GHD Inc. for engineering work for the Great Sand Lake sewer design in the amount of $616,250.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion?
Discussion, yeah. And, and I know that there was, I'm the liaison to the Water Wastewater Commission, so I believe there's some comments, or we...
The next contract.
The next contract. Okay.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure we gave her the opportunity.
Yeah. I lost sight of you, Norine, back there. Okay. So moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero, Joe.
Thank you.
And town administrator's report.
I have nothing, because I was going to hold off on the contract that has incorrect funding. Other than that, I've got no report tonight.
Okay. Norina, do you want to, I'll just wait for you.
I didn't hear what Joe just said.
He's going to hold on.
I'm not presenting anything this evening, because there's a contract that has an incorrect funding source.
Okay. I'm going to say my piece anyway. I appreciate that, that information, though, Joe. Good evening, Madam Sheehan, Select Board Members, Town Administrator, Norine Donahue, Board, Chair of the Board of Water Wastewater Commissioners. So I am here to speak on the contract with GHD that was in the packet. I just heard what Joe said, but it was in the packet, so I'm here to speak on that. It appeared that the town had contracted with GHD for a variety of services, including Onco wastewater services, starting July 1st, not to exceed $15,000. I have to say that although the contract was signed by the town administrator, the funding was approved by the Finance Director, and a PO was created, that that action was done on the Select Board's behalf, all within the signing limits that you allow. So my complaint isn't with those people, it's with the five of you. So I just want to be clear about that. So the contract that was in the packet, or is in the packet for tonight, appears to be a hybrid of sorts to me. Perhaps it isn't. I'm unclear about some things. But it appears to include some CWMP work, as well as possibly some Phase II work. I will say that a line in the June 10th contract, I'll call it that, that's the one in your packet, says that the services include assisting the town in wastewater infrastructure needs for existing infrastructure, including but not limited to engineering assistance with the existing collection system and issues that arise with this system. Sounds like Phase II, right? But this contract also includes wastewater infrastructure needs for new infrastructure. I have to say that as we go forward, there will be and have been times when design issues may arise in the old implemented area of Phase II. And that will involve joint cooperation to find a remedy. This contract does not appear to be in the spirit of a joint action. So I just gave you the information on the June 10th contract that's in the packet. Now I'd like to mention a contract signed with GHD on June 4th. This contract was signed by the Water Wastewater Commissioners, also with GHD, also for $15,000. It was titled Onco Drinking Water Services, but nevertheless, the duties listed do include, do include both water and sewer. So in this contract of June 4th, signed by the Water Wastewater Commissioners, the line that I'm looking at in NEA says includes assisting the town in the following areas: water and sewer infrastructure needs, including but not limited to procurement related to new generators and insertion valves. It almost sounds like the same services are in two different GHD contracts, without other information. I'll also mention that there's a line which appears in both of these contracts regarding GIS services. And without further investigation, I'd speculate as to where those duties really would fall in this confusing world that we now live in. So I have concerns about the nature of the list of duties on, definitely on your contract of June 10th, not specifically about the Water Wastewater contract of June 4th. But now I'd like to talk about the funding. And I did hear what the town administrator said, that there was a question about the funding source that I'm going to speak about. But this whole topic is really about communication. So the funding, the funding thing is a side point. But I will say that per the documentation, it says that the June 10th contract is to be paid for by the Water Wastewater Budget Line Item for professional services. Now, that line item was approved by the Water Wastewater Board, and that line item, not the whole budget, is $406,260. That number alone should tell you there was planning. You know, if we wanted a, a catch-all estimate, we would have put $400,000. We put $406,260, because we had items planned for this year out of that line. So if, without our knowledge, $15,000 is deducted from that, we're in a bad spot. I also want to mention that the DOR Bulletin that's been around for years governing enterprise funds states that expenses of an enterprise fund must be appropriated in and incurred directly by the enterprise. So sum that all up. Can an official sign for a disbursement of enterprise funds when they are not part of the board that oversees their budget? Good question. Now, it's possible the town can get a legal opinion from KP Law stating that it's legal to sign for and approve expenses coming from... to sign for and approve expenses coming from the enterprise fund with no knowledge of the board commissioners. Then I suppose I could get an opinion from Mark Abrams, our fund consultant. And I imagine that that would say that it all goes back to our sketchy charter in terms of who controls the funds. But no opinion will ever be written saying that the course of action taken is right. It's impossible because legal opinion, anything else, the way this fell down is impossible. If I hadn't noticed this in the packet, when would the Board of Water Wastewater Commissioners have been informed? Would it be next fall when all of a sudden their monthly expense things didn't jive with the towns because there were expenses being deducted that we had no knowledge of? I hate these conversations. I'm sure you all do, too. We meet, we talk about transparency, we talk about improving communication, and no one in the chain of processing the contract could pick up a phone or write an email. There's several of you who know that this episode is certainly not the first time that I've discovered something of significant importance to the department and I found it in the packet. So, and to Joe's comment about this not being presented tonight, I wouldn't be here if I had gotten a phone call. So, I'll add that to the mix. Finally, let me finish by saying, on behalf of the Board of Water Wastewater Commissioners, I make the following request. Rescind the contract that is signed and executed in your packet. It's flawed. It's an amalgamation of two separate plans and part of the services are already covered under a previously executed contract. It's based on an improper funding source and considering the circumstances, I'd ask that you vote to cancel it tonight. Finally, this lack of informing the commissioners about matters that concern them has got to stop. You can look to employees, you can ask what happened this time, what went wrong this time, but from the Board of Water Wastewater Commissioners to your board, it's got to end. So, I appreciate the time talking to you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Noreen. I don't think, you know, you and I spoke earlier and I don't think we disagree in the sense of communication. I think it also goes to an earlier comment that Jeff made about us being more communicative with different committees as well, where we have something on our agenda, if it involves them, that we should, you know, make them alerted to that as liaisons and also ask staff to help us make those connections. So, I agree that had we had that line of communication, which we truly are trying to improve, and my suggestion would be, too, that, you know, we talked about our monthly meetings or whatever we thought we were going to set up to have these lines of communication open so that we both know what's on each other's radar. And I think we're due for that, anyway. I think we talked about, like, mid-July and I think that would be a good time to try to, again, look at what else is coming and that we're all on the same page. I would say the Finance Director should have probably reached out to say, "This is what we're doing and we're taking it from here." And then, to your point, things would have rolled from there, but that's not what happened.
I would only ask then, who should have reached out to me to tell me, "Not tonight, Noreen. We'll bring that up another time."
Well, I didn't even, I didn't realize that either at the time. But, no, you're right. It's, it follows suit with what you're saying, so, Dawn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to cut through some of this because it's not just communication. I was the chair of the Charter Committee when the Water Wastewater was added to become its current condition. The line was pretty simple. I mean, you can boil down the number of pages that were written into something really simple. As a sewer authority, the Select Board voted to build a system, but upon its completion, it was turned over to the Water Wastewater Board. And we have no control over, in putting a contract together that has to do with new things as well as repairing old things, is anathema to that. Because once it's built and it's turned over to you operationally, it was supposed to be you deal with the repairs and/or maintenance for the existing things. They should not be in the same contract as building anything new.
I would have to disagree just slightly, only in terms of the fact that we operated a certain way for five years. Now, we're learning to operate a different way. And although I like the story you portray, in reality, I think there's going to be many times when our roles do join each other and we're truly going to have to work jointly. And jointly doesn't mean that things go on and I find them out on Friday at 4:30, quarter of five.
I didn't want to obscure what I said, but I was actually saying is you own it once it's built. So, you have to be at least a general equal partner. You have to be. Because that was always presupposed in all that language.
Well, and I'm just going to throw in the other part, the state the obvious, that, you know, we also currently, not only do I agree, and I think board members agree as well, with the improved communication, because we all agreed to that. But, you know, we do have a little bit of a different situation than we did a couple months ago. You know, and while you're looking to fill that position, we've already had that discussion where we had a meeting and it was successful in terms of, how do we deal with 800 number call, you know, eight, how do we get an 800 number? Or, in the meantime, how do we set up fielding phone calls? And I think that's going well.
That's right.
So, we can make improvements and we have to work collectively because nothing is straightforward right now. It certainly, would it be easier if we still had a certain person in place? Sure. But we don't have that, so we got to move forward and we got to do it in a productive manner. And that means better communication, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other things for you, Joe? You said you had nothing else, right?
Madam Chair, sorry, I'll keep it brief. And I trust that you'll be able to fix some of the communication issues, but relative to this contract and given the contract authority that we've given the town administrator, how are we going to see this contract before it comes back, signed or announced? Showing the changes, showing where there may be duplications?
Well, I think we need to have that, right, exactly, have that communication between what we have and what we had in place that we were talking about signing tonight, what Joe was going to, and then what Noreen is saying is currently in place. So, if we don't have a need for that, then we won't have to bring it back, but we need to review that, correct?
Before it's signed.
Right. He's not, we're not moving forward with it currently, so I think the communication--
I think that's what Michael was saying, though.
Oh, I was asking was, before he signs the new contract, are we going to get a--
Yeah, we're--
--how it's going to change. That's all I'm asking.
That's what I'm saying, is like, we're going to take that and this and put them together and see what is what before we do anything.
And then, going forward, it would be, you know, a conversation that probably doesn't need to be a full-boarded conversation, but a conversation that gets the Board of Water Wastewater Commissioners a seat during any of this contract design, so that they're part of it.
Well, yeah, and we did have that conversation where it was, what's new construction was going over here and without Dan in his seat. And then, and now, we're talking about, I mean, we're kind of talking about, back to Noreen's point, we're talking about two things, right? And I think the other part of this is going to be that we're going to have another meeting with them because we agreed that we needed to meet at least quarterly, but probably more than that, until we get all these pieces in motion and so that we're all on the same page.
And just so I'm clear, I'm not talking about our meetings, I'm not talking about the once-a-month. I'm talking about the town administrator, the procurement head, including them, the Board of Water Wastewater Commissioners, as these contracts are being designed or before they're signed and before they come forward. Not us.
And not, no. And also, I think you can say the Finance Director in that as well, because--
Agreed.
--that's where that reach out, in my opinion, should have happened.
Agreed.
I didn't want to walk all the way back. I just want to say, I just want to say, you need these services. I just don't want you to use our funding and I don't want to commingle.
Understood. And I think the more communication, we won't have these problems if we're communicating more, so. And Select Board Member, report. Pete?
Well, I think, actually, just kind of what we were talking about, communication. I, for one, wasn't aware of some of the conversations you just alluded to with the wastewater department. So, I'd like us to be, you know, as a group, as a group, collective body, updated a little bit more on some of those topics. You know, you referred to trying to fill the void of the water superintendent, which I appreciate, but I had no idea as far as routine meetings with the chair.
So, we haven't had any of those, just to be clear. We had a meeting, we had a meeting, that was a public meeting, about how to address the phone calls coming in, about questions that it was no longer somebody there to answer those questions. So, that was a public meeting. In a board meeting, we talked about, when we had a joint board meeting with the water commissioners, we talked about approving communication. That's what I'm alluding to. The only other conversation wasn't when I spoke with Noreen today about the confusion about the contract.
Yeah, so, again, and I'm sure there are other items, but keep it, keeping the collective group, you know, on the same page, I think will be important, whether it's with wastewater or other items, so.
Dawn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before Cindy leaves, I am going to throw a question towards her, recognizing that there's a whole bunch of people who've just rolled onto the Cape. Many, even the residents, were probably away during the winter. What are we talking about in terms of summer in the port and music? And when is it? You're addressing a new audience, is what I'm trying to tell you.
So, I don't know what the next meeting is. I probably would have announced it then, but music that we handle for the summer, July and August, every Wednesday starts, and we actually approved it the last meeting, I believe, July 3rd runs until August 28th, and it's 5 to 8.
And willingly, we'll invite people from Chatham to come over to enjoy Harwich Port.
We willingly invite everyone to Harwich.
Anything else?
Dawn, remember the tagline for the, for Harwich, we branded many years ago, "Harwich is the warm side."
Good job.
No report, but a, some more congratulations and thank you. So, I'll start with the taxpayers for buying all this new fancy furniture. And Jamie, good one, obviously, Channel 18 director and--
Wonderful job.
--and the DPW maintenance crew, I would imagine, because this all looks very heavy. And I appreciate the bulletproof front.
The seats are so nice.
It looks great. So, thank everybody involved, please.
Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge Hinkley's and Cindy for a wonderful event honoring our fire department. It was very well attended. It was a beautiful sunny afternoon and thank you to Red River Barbecue as well, so.
Noreen, I'm not getting up again, but Dawn's boring. We had, Chatham was going to be there, they couldn't fill the needs of many other local fire and rescue.
Yeah. It was amazing. And the Coast Guard, right?
The Coast Guard boat.
Coast Guard was there and--
Helicopters going around.
Also, we had Governor Healy in our beautiful town at a beautiful event, Whichmere. We did not attend the event, but welcomed Governor Healy to our beautiful town and she was, and I want to pass this on to board members because Governor Healy conveyed to me that we do the difficult work. And she is fully behind us on sewer and on housing and just thanked us for the work we do. So, that's it.
Motion adjourned.
Who seconded? Anybody?
I'll second it if he takes his.
All in favor?